Okay, this is City of February in Nebraska Council Agenda. Today is Tuesday, March 7, 2023, 7:30 PM. All Agenda items are for discussion and action will be taken as deemed appropriate. The City Council reserves the right to go into executive session in accordance with Section 84-1410. Number one, call to order. Pursuant to Section 84-14128 in the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the entry of this meeting room and is available for viewing by the public. Number two, roll call, please.
Brown.
Here.
Ebke.
Here.
Poulsen.
Here.
Rogge.
Here.
Gazelka.
Here.
Ryan Schmidt.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Dusty Schmidt.
Here.
Number two, supplemental request for future items. Individuals who have appropriate items for City Council consideration should complete the request for future Agenda items form located near the entrance of the meeting room. If issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. The item and schedule for a committee or council meeting notification of the date will be given. Number three, consent agenda. Number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 21, 2023. Number two, approval of the claims.
Motion to accept consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Poulsen, Gazelka, Schmidt, Brown, Rogge, Ebke, Schmidt, Davis, all voting yes, motion will carry. Brings us to number four, public hearings and presentations. Number one, public hearing regarding an application for Larkins addition preliminary plat, a plat of the southwest quarter of Section 2 Township 2 North, Range 2 East of the Jefferson County, Nebraska, generally located at 3002 Industrial Avenue, Fairberry, Nebraska.
Laura Bedlin, Development Services Director, this has been seen by the Planning and Zoning Commission, you guys have information in your packets. They have approved it, recommended approval for preliminary approval from council. It will go back to planning and zoning for the final and come back to after that again, just so you're aware of the process. In this packet, there is a subdivision agreement, and within that agreement, under my recommendation, there is a request to waiver the front setback requirement. Wasn't sure if this could come through this way or if it needed to go to the Board of Adjustments. The attorney has since advised that it would be more appropriate for it actually to go to the Board of Adjustments rather than come through with the subdivision agreement. So if you do decide to approve the subdivision agreement, I would recommend that in that process, you remove number one, G, from the subdivision agreement, which is the front building setback, so that we can take that to the Board of Adjustments. Any questions? I know that Ben is also here, if you want to ask him anything.
May I already say one D?
G.
G.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, what we've all been waiting for. Number two, presentation regarding the benefits of allowing chickens within the city limits. Devin Lovegrin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Devin Lovegrin, and I know Spencer has brought this up lots of times, both to him personally as well as to Laura, and she's super excited that if it were to pass, she's super excited to work forward with it. But I printed some information for you all, which was handed out. In there, you'll see the two articles I'll reference here in a minute, as well as the rules and regulations for Lincoln, Omaha, and Grand Island, for what they do and what they allow. When I called over to City Beatrice actually today and asked, because I went online, looked at what they had, and then ended up calling, they actually, I mean, they don't have anything against it, as long as you don't mistreat them with their disease, you don't bury them in the yard, things like that. With that, I just wanted to let you know that I'm here today to argue in favor of urban chicken keeping in our city. As you've seen in many recent years, the desire for integrated and secure food systems has been growing, and urban chicken keeping can play a vital role in achieving this. COVID-19 really highlighted the importance of both a secure and sustainable food system, with many individuals and families turning to urban farming in the background of chicken keeping as a way to secure their own food supply. Legalizing urban chicken keeping can support and encourage this desire for more integrated and secure food systems, promoting sustainability and self-sufficiency within the city. As highlighted in the articles that I printed out for you in McLean's and the Rapidian, you'll see that legalizing urban chicken keeping can have numerous benefits for our city and its residents. Firstly, it can address food insecurity in our city by providing fresh eggs and meat, which can then supplement the diets of low-income families and individuals. This will also promote food security and reduce reliance on food banks and other charitable organizations, and empower those individuals to help make a healthy change in their life and help the community to take control of their own food supply. In addition to addressing food insecurity, legalizing urban chicken keeping can help contribute to a more sustainable and environmentally friendly community. Chickens are low-maintenance animals that produce valuable fertilizer for gardens, they eat very little, and they reduce the need for those chemical fertilizers that we have put out currently. By promoting urban farming and sustainable living practices, our city can reduce its needs on the environment and make it a greener and more sustainable place to live. A great example of this, and it's in the article by McLean, is a city in Belgium offered three chickens per household to the people that live there, to anyone who wanted a chicken. They had 2,000 families raise their hands, so the city bought 6,000 chickens and distributed them out to the individuals. In the first month in that city, it dropped 100 tons of food waste to the landfill, because they were able to feed that food waste, whether it's the potato peelings, chicken scraps, directly to those chickens, which then produces eggs. Furthermore, legalizing urban chicken keeping can have an economic benefit for our city. By promoting sustainable living practices, our city can attract environmentally conscious businesses and individuals contributing to the local economy. Additionally, surplus eggs and produce can be sold at the farmer's market, shameless plug, and at local stores, providing additional income for residents and contributing to the local economy. Moreover, urban chicken keeping can promote a sense of community and connection among residents. Chickens can bring people together, whether it be through sharing eggs, discussing chicken keeping techniques, or simply getting together to discuss what to do next. In addition, workshops and classes can be organized to help residents learn about growing their own food, about doing what needs to be done for them to be able to help take care of themselves, fostering a greater sense of community and collaboration. Finally, legalizing urban chicken keeping is a matter of individual freedom and choice. By respecting individual choice and promoting a diverse and inclusive community, our great city can create a more tolerant and accepting society that benefits all residents. In conclusion, legalizing urban chickens will greatly benefit our city and its residents in numerous ways, including addressing food insecurity, promoting sustainable and self-sufficient food systems, reducing environmental impact, fostering economic growth, building community, and respecting individual choice. I urge you, as City Council members, to seriously consider legalizing urban chicken keeping in our city, as the benefits are far too numerous to ignore. Thank you. With that, I'll take any questions.
You know, this is the third time we've visited this, since I've been on. I know in 2014, we looked at it, and I surveyed nine communities, and the majority of them do offer, a lot of whom, there'll be no roosters, which, you know, and they limit, some of them limit it to one chicken, others two, and, but, you know, there is a benefit, but there's also a risk.
Absolutely.
You know, I've got a grandson that got sicker than sick because he was in his grandparents' chicken coop and had the chicken fetus and got in his feet. So there are some risks to that as well. So, you know, I, it's whatever the council wants to do, you know, I don't have a problem with, but, you know, like I say, this is the third time, and we haven't passed it yet, so we'll see what happens.
Absolutely, and I included in there, you can see what the City Lincoln, the City Grand Island, the City Grand Island requires, an acre, to be able to allow chickens. I looked at our lot, where we live, and I think we'd be the only ones on the whole city block that would probably have an acre worth of ground. There are like places like Lincoln, it's two hens, then you've got other places, Grand Island is four hens per acre, Omaha kind of depends on the permit. Omaha is a big proponent of at least two, because chickens work in a flock, right? But it's a great, it's a great tool. I had it when we lived in Lincoln, I haven't lived in Beatrice, when we lived out by Waverly. Granted, I wasn't a country, but it is a great benefit. As we, Spencer and I, we were all joking before this, you know, my daughter had a guinea pig, had a guinea pig, but what I see is, the coolest thing about chickens is, they're fairly easy to take care of, right? There's not a lot that goes into them, and it'll help, like, my kids are super excited this does pass, that it will give them the opportunity to be a part of the farm, to be back to kind of where we came from with my grandpa, just out to here, right? But it is something that I've been passionate about, that's why my wife and I do the farmer's market, it's why we give away food at the end of the market to individuals that need it most, we take it to the folks that live up north there, or we'll take it to individuals in the community that need it most, is because things like this can be a game changer. Simply growing tomatoes on your patio in a five-gallon bucket can really help teach someone and completely change their trajectory, and teaches them self-sufficiency, that they can step out, they can step up, and they can take care of themselves.
So I guess my biggest concern is, is that we have enough problems with animals running at large currently, and now you introduce some animals potentially that some of those other animals will attack, and then there's, and then on top of that, how are we going to police whatever the number is? You know, how do I prove that, because I'm sure you could say that we can self-police ourselves, but we've seen that that's not been a real-life thing, that, you know, if somebody can have three, they'll have seven, you know? So I guess I have a concern about, you know, Dan being able to control this, he's got plenty of things going on, how, it's just one more thing I see as a potential problem, is that now we have these things running at large. In my yard, in the last 20 years, I've been, had my children harassed by a goat, illegal chickens, multiple dogs, and I guess, I guess I have a concern about the same kind of complaints from other people.
Absolutely, right, I get it. However, you have individuals that feel they're going to do the right thing, right? A lock only keeps out honest people, is that fair? And so, with saying with this, is if, like, we say you all pass this, I come down here, pay the $50 that it is, or whatever, you decide to have me the fee for the permit, I'm holding myself accountable. I can't hold the woman across the street, or the family down the road that are butchering chickens in their backyard, that raise them underneath a trampoline, right? I have no control over that. What I can do is I can make sure that I'm doing the right thing, because by doing that, then we're going to set the example for those around us. We can't control others. What we can do is control ourselves in doing the right thing, that should hopefully, we have faith and have trust in individuals in this community, I mean, you were elected by individuals that had faith for you, right, to do the right things and to speak on their behalf, and so that's what I would say, is have faith, right? It could absolutely fall flat on its face, and it could be a disaster, and you could have, you know, big old roosters running down Main Street, but it could also not.
And undoing something like that, that is, if it turns out to be a disaster, is going to be pretty tough.
Absolutely, but it's no different than what we're facing now.
And several times, Judge, you said, you talked about, you know, there's financial gain for some people, how many chickens is that going to take to make it worthwhile, I mean, to sell eggs? What, a chicken will produce, what, six eggs a week?
So one egg about every 25 hours, and then she'll molt.
So about six a week, seven days. You gotta have two to get a dozen, well, my wife and I, we don't eat a lot of egg, but we'll eat a dozen a week, just, you know, so to make any money, how many chickens do you have to have in your yard?
Well, I wouldn't say this is more about making money, but what it is for individuals that, like, my wife's grandmother lives by herself, and she said if this passed, she would absolutely get chickens, because otherwise, she's 86, lives by herself, and she gets really lonely. And so she's like, hey, if I had chickens, give me something to take care of, and I can make sure that the gal next to me has eggs to be able to, and, you know, something we'll see at the farmer's market all the time, is we work together, right? There's lots of individuals that come along, and just like zucchini during the growing season, if you leave your car unlocked, right, you got zucchini in your backseat. It gives people the opportunity, not necessarily to make money, we don't, the whole idea is not there, but it is for individuals like that, who are living on low income, it gives them the opportunity, hey, six dozen eggs for five bucks, or six dozen, or half a day, six eggs, you, six eggs for two bucks, cool, I can go get a soda, right? But for like us, we wouldn't sell them, we'd eat them ourselves, we'd keep them there and foster our flock to help them. It's not about, it's not mainly about making money, it's about giving individuals the opportunity to be able to raise these chickens. Chickens are pets that, you know, that get back, chickens will, they'll eat your ticks and fleas out of the yard, they'll put them in a garden, they're a great source of fertilizer for your garden, I mean, there's a lot more benefits than just raise money, you know, to...
But to have them eat bugs out of the yard, you're going to have to have them free range, and I'm not in favor of free range.
No, and that's, so that is something that every single one of these ordinances that I've printed out for you, for both Lincoln, Grand Island, Omaha, Omaha goes as far as the building inspector and inspector group. Now, not saying you have to do that, but they are contained, and all, they're held to one location, but most of these coops, if you go to Oarslands or whatever, right, most of these coops are on wheels. My plan would be is to put them on my garden, because chickens lay great fertilizer when they're out scratching up the dirt, eating whatever else, and then, you know, when the sun goes down and they go up and they go to roost, you just move them along, in the morning, they got a brand-new buffet to go out to.
Yeah, when you talk about the hours of light, if I'm correct in the research I did, a chicken has to have so much light in order to lay eggs.
Absolutely.
So when the, when we don't have as much sunlight, there are no eggs. So there, you're back having to buy eggs, because the chickens won't unless you put artificial light on them.
Oh, absolutely, but it's no different than when you have a garden and grow peas, you eat the peas out of your garden. In the middle of December, you're not eating peas, you're not, you're not growing peas in your yard to do that, because they're not going to grow, so you have to go buy them, right? They'll, you plant when it's time to plant, you harvest when it's time to harvest, and when it's time to sit back and be idle?
So how many months out of a year will a chicken actually lay eggs?
So it depends on the breed. Some breeds will lay eggs, they're bred to lay eggs, probably like 11 months out of the year based on sunlight. Others are going to be, if you go more like the heritage breeds, the traditional breeds, they're going to be more due to season, right? They're not going to, they're still going to lay eggs, maybe, but not every 26 hours, they're going to extend out to like 47, 48, 49, somewhere in there. But there are commercial breeds that you can get from hatcheries or from Oarslands or wherever, that have been bred to not care about day length, and they're laying eggs. Now, you'll have to supplement, right, because you don't get the different nutrients and amino acids that exist in the grass and in the bugs and everything else that exists in the winter, you'll have to supplement that feed, but most of the time, the chickens, they go through mold, right? But most of the time, they're going to lay eggs, and then when they don't, they stop, but then when it's time, they'll kick back and lay eggs again.
I'm going to, I'm going to throw this out there, so I've talked with Dan, our code enforcement officer, and my wife and my mother both want to have chickens, okay? From a, I guess, from a code enforcement standpoint, from a city standpoint, I don't think we are tough enough to take this on. I mean, we are, we're still chasing down renters, we're, I mean, we're towing cars, we're doing, now Dan's getting involved with this, best disinspection, so we can kind of keep going with our house demolitions. I don't, I don't think we're tough enough to take this on, we don't have enough manpower, I mean, to regulate, you know, how many chickens they have, or, you know, hey, now chickens are out, I mean, we got dogs and cats and stuff we're chasing around right now already. We already have so much to do, that I think, I think it would be a, I think this is just another, another thing that we would add on top of that, that we just can't handle right now. That's, that's my opinion.
I think some of the other ordinances and stuff you look at, do they, do them people have to, the hatchkins have to talk to their neighbors and get their approval?
Yes, so in the city of, here, it's on the very last one, the City of Lincoln, it has to be five feet from neighboring property, 50 feet from neighboring residents, and you have to have approval of your neighbors. They sign off on your permit before you go down.
I'm sitting here, hearing all this discussion, and I, I got to think here. I asked my wife how much eggs were in the store, Saturday, she told me $1.75 a dozen. Well, how many eggs do you have to produce for this thing to work, when you got to buy a chicken coop, when you got to buy wire, when you got to buy feed, you got to buy water? I mean, I'm questioning the feasibility of this whole thing.
To me, Doug, I was, I was lobbied by my family, as this is a, this is an activity, right? It's no different, no different to my family to have a dog or something like that.
That's what I was going to say, you can make this as big a deal as you want, or a small deal as you want, but once restrictions on, it's going to be hard to regulate it. If you just kind of let it regulate itself, I don't know if any of you've ever had chickens, obviously Devin and I have, it's not a big deal, it really isn't.
How much do you spend raising a tomato in your own garden?
Exactly.
Where you go to the store, you go to raise and buy it for what, 90 cents? How much, how much does it cost to raise that one tomato in your garden?
My point, my point, Devin, and I'm going to make this again, I don't have to send out my code enforcement guy to regulate tomatoes.
Well, you do it in the front yard, because the ordinance won't allow gardens in the front yard.
No.
Because you have an individual, then I'm, you know, I'm all for it, I'm, yes, urban farming, let's do it, right? Let's have food for us, let's have all of this, but there comes a part, you, you have to have, and I'm forgiving, you have to have faith, you have to believe in the people that, that they're going to do the right thing, and I get it, right? There's a lot of people that won't, absolutely. There's individuals in the community that have 17 dogs in their house. Ask my wife and I how we know, right? There are individuals that have stuff from floor to ceiling, right? That's not allowed, but it still happens. But the majority of individuals in our community do the right thing. Almost everyone does the right thing. The loudest individuals is the vocal minority. They're the ones you hear about, they're the ones who come up, they're the ones who make the most noise, the ones who paid their taxes, cut their lawn, raised a couple tomatoes in their garden bed, right? You don't even hear from them, right? Because they're just doing the right thing. The idea here is that the right people will continue to do the right thing, you have faith in those individuals to continue the right thing. There's always going to be individuals that are going to go out there and do the wrong But this is, the idea is that it is for individuals, you trust them, right? You trust the people that put you here, you trust the people to do the right thing, and you trust them to take care of the chickens the same way they take care of their, you know, little Min Pin poodle, and, you know, their cats, and their other.
Back, was it 2020 when we did this last time?
Yes.
I did a non-scientific poll on Facebook a couple different times, and it was, I can't remember now, but it was like 86% against to the 14% for, and I can tell you, probably 10% of that 14% were people that I thought were probably going to, would do good and make a good coop and take care of them, and the rest, no. You know, I mean, just because I knew who was making the comments and, and it just scared me, I just don't think that, you know, they're going to take care of them. And then we got more messages, we're calling Dan, we're calling Sheriff's Department, that's another thing, I thought, will the, the county attorney, if we have to write somebody up for, is he going to, is he going to prosecute it? That's a problem with us right now in the situation we're in with our law enforcement. So I don't know if we want to, I would be in favor of waiting on this and maybe making a committee of, get somebody like yourself to support it, and some people that maybe aren't, and join them, get, have the mayor assign somebody, talk to the county, county attorney, see what he's going to do if we go with it, if, you know, if we need to prosecute people, because we, we can't just slap one hand anymore, we need to make them sit up and take the tension, and that's my thoughts.
If I could throw my own anecdote on there, this is the number one issue I hear from my constituents, everyone complains about why we can't have chickens. So I don't know about your Facebook thing, but everyone that I talk to, I shouldn't say everyone, but it's, it is a vast majority, why can't we have chickens, why can't we have chickens? Talk to you guys, that's what I tell them, because I'm all for it. And this will be, like, say, a third or fourth time, I can't remember, that this has been brought to us, and again, I will support it, you know, I'm not going to bring it up again, because this is, this happens every time, dogs chasing chickens and people not doing whatever, and it's going to be a bad deal, and, welcome to February, here's your chicken, you know, it's not the way it's going to be, but it doesn't matter. So that's just, my frustration is, you know, is that.
I can say I've got three comments this last week from five constituents, and they were all three against it, so I didn't get the same vibe, I guess.
We don't talk to the same people, never do.
Actually, I've only had two people since this came out, this time, talk to me about it, neither one of them ran my ward, but they were, oh, deadly against it, so.
There's always going to be some way against something, doesn't matter what it is, you know, citizens against virtually everything, it's a cave person, you know, it doesn't matter what it is, I'm against it, you know?
All right, we done the questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on to our business, number one, consider request from Ben Larkins to waive part of the water drainage connection fee.
Laura Bedlin, Development Services again, you guys have the information in your packet, you are aware of what the drainage connection fee is, and the request to waive is so that we would just cover the lot one, once that's subdivided. Again, Ben is here, if you have any questions. Any questions for me?
Part two would just be covered under the next, under the next development, okay, no problem. Any questions, guys?
For me?
Nope? Good.
Good.
Okay, so I'd like to hear a motion from somebody.
Motion to allow for a waiver?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Poulsen, Gazelka, Schmidt, Brown, Rogge, Ebke, Schmidt, Davis, all voting yes, motion will carry. Number two, consider a recommendation from Planning Commission regarding application for Larkins addition preliminary plat, a plat of the southwest quarter of Section 2 Township 2 North, Range 2 East of the Jefferson County, Nebraska, generally located at 3002 Industrial Ave, Fairberry, Nebraska. Now, is this the time where I say that we are going to strike 1G out of that? Yes. So if there is a motion, that motion will need to include striking 1G.
I would make that motion, we approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission, with the exception of Section 1G regarding front building setbacks.
Second.
Is that correct?
All right, there's a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Poulsen, Gazelka, Schmidt, Brown, Rogge, Ebke, Schmidt, Davis, all voting yes, motion will carry. Number three, consider approval of the bid for demolition services for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP, flood buyout and authorizing Mayor Brown to sign all related documents.
I would make a motion to approve the bid demolition from Patton.
Second.
And authorize Mayor Brown to sign all related documents. Okay, I have a second over here, okay. I have a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Poulsen, Gazelka, Schmidt, Brown, Rogge, Ebke, Schmidt, Davis, all voting yes, motion will carry. Number four, consider approval of modification of ordinance 294194.02, prohibited animals and foul to permit chickens within city limits.
Can you approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Poulsen, Gazelka, Schmidt, Brown, Rogge, Ebke, Schmidt, Davis, all voting yes, motion will carry. Consider approval of manager name change on liquor license for Walmart, number 418 to Douglas Hank.
Motion to approve the name change?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Poulsen, Gazelka, Schmidt, Brown, Rogge, Ebke, Schmidt, Davis, all voting yes, motion will carry. Number seven, consider special designated license approval for the Fairberry Chamber of Commerce Pork Compliance Event on April 29, 2023, at the VFW from 5 to 10 PM.
I move to approve the special designated license for the Chamber of Commerce Pork Compliance Event, April 29, VFW 5 to 10.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Poulsen, Gazelka, Schmidt, Brown, Rogge, Ebke, Schmidt, Davis, all voting yes, motion will carry. Number eight, consider approval of the Miller &amp; Associates contract for water supply evaluation services.
This is basically the same thing we approved a couple weeks ago, a couple weeks ago, we approved the dollar amounts, this is just deciding up the contract for the Water Sourcing Committee and Miller &amp; Associates, and with that, I would make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Poulsen, Gazelka, Schmidt, Brown, Rogge, Ebke, Schmidt, Davis, all voting yes, motion will carry. Number six, resolutions and ordinances, there are none. Number seven, reports, mayor, some of you on the council, I've talked to about this a little bit. Number six, resolutions and ordinances, there are known. Number seven, reports, mayor, some of you on the council, I've talked to about this a little bit, with the Allegiant Ball Field, with tearing down that, with tearing down that, that storage building that we have down there, there's been some talk around about what's going on with that building down there, kind of what the, what the status is. I talked to Bill Rogge about it here today, they're really, they're kind of in their fundraising phase right now, they did have, they did have a, a building that was kind of looked at from Weston's to be donated, that really didn't pan out, they don't really have anything set in stone right now. The city has, we have committed as a city to put $10,000 towards that, as of, as of many meetings ago, but as of right now, there's not really any plans, there's nothing to bring to council, but just know that they're, they're working on that, they're fundraising. I told Bill whenever it gets to the point that they, that they have something in stone, obviously needs to go through Laura, as far as, you know, permitting and all that kind of stuff, and then bring that back to council so we can, we can put our blessing on it, so, just wanted to throw that out there. Again, if you guys reach out to Dan Larkin, I know he would probably appreciate the condolences from you, but, other than that, any committees?
The Public Works, the Shamrock Shuffle, and the Shriners, Fourth of July, did not change, so that was approved administratively.
Okay.
So it did not go through committee, but just so you're aware.
Any update on the power plant?
There is no updates on the power plant right now.
City administrator?
Haven't had, haven't had any luck, we've had, we've had some less than impressive applicants, but I'm still looking diligently, but I know Aaron is as well. Okay, number eight, motion adjourned.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please cast your vote. Paulson, Kazalka, Schmidt, Brown, Rogge, Abke, Schmidt, Davis, voting yes, we are adjourned, thank you.